Okay, so it is nine thirty-one. Thank you again, everyone for joining us for this special Measure J meeting. We'll have two meetings in December. Let's get started. Melissa, can you do a, no, I do pledge allegiance first, just kidding. Well, let's get started with the pledge allegiance if you could. Are we gonna pull up the flag? Absolutely an option, not a good one.
You wanna do it without?
Let's do it. I think we feel it. It's, I can lead us today. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to United
States of America.
America. Everyone's still on mute, that's okay. And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Nation, under God.
Under God.
Divisible, with liberty and justice for all. Expected it's a delay, but it was silent, so that's fine. Melissa, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Let me go. Commissioner Marshall, Ann and Sipkins then. All right. Commissioner Cabellos?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Federer?
Present.
Commissioner Marshall? He's trying to log in. Commissioner Marshall is here. Commissioner Sipkins?
Present, without, without internet, unfortunately.
Commissioner Thickepin?
He, he's on. He just said he's on. The poodles.
He is.
The poodle is right.
Okay, now I'm on.
Commissioner Wolfens?
Present.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Present.
Commissioner Newby?
Here.
Vice Chair Robin?
Yes, present.
Chair Sotomayor.
Great. Um, well, next we have the acceptance of agenda. The Measure J Commission will discuss the order of the agenda and may amend the order and add items and may remove items from the agenda for discussion. We just have one item, really, of business. Can I get a motion to accept today's agenda for our special meeting?
So, Davis?
Yeah.
Can't hear you.
And Chair Soto, your, your volume, we can't hear you very well.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, now we can.
Yep.
Hold on.
Yeah, I think the, the people who are not speaking need to go unmute because the, their microphones are activating and then yours is not.
Oh, okay. Um, sorry about that. Um, so I know we got a motion to accept the agenda. I'm not sure if we got a second. Did we get a second?
I can.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Federer. On favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Densions? No? Great. Okay. So today, we do have some speakers. This. Next item is public comment. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Measure J Oversight Commission. On agenda, three minutes will be assigned to each speaker. If there is a written comment that you wish to distribute to this commission, please hand it to the commission secretary, or you can also email it to melissa@melissa.sanchez@palmspringsca.gov. Do we have any speakers, Melissa?
We do. We have David Feltman. Let me. Hello, Mr. Feltman.
I'm declining to speak today. I'm just observing. Thank you.
We have a few speakers, right, Melissa?
We do. The next one. I don't see him on, but I'm gonna double check. We have Tracy Martin. Tracy Martin, can you hear us?
Hi, good morning. I'll, I'll take a pass for now, too. I'd like to just observe for now.
Okay. That is all.
We won't be able to do public comment later, correct, Melissa? We can't open it up again?
Correct.
So, just to confirm, Tracy, I just want to make sure you're aware, this is kind of the one time you can kind of speak on public comment items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, all right, well, um, I'll keep my welcome comments brief and just express my gratitude. Um, I know some of us are taking time out of our workdays or having to make accommodations, so really appreciate it. And I also want to say thank you. We have a few guests for today, too. Or who are gonna help us lead and kind of contribute to this conversation around the Plaza Theater. So, um, you know, I want to say thank you to the foundation, also the fire chief. And, um, let's, let's dive in. So, um, we're gonna get started on new business two A, which is, um, the approval or, and the review of a recommendation to city council, which city council will be reviewing tonight. For the Plaza Theater funding. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chris to kind of give us an intro, and I think he's gonna hand it over to the foundation, and then we'll be able to have commission-wide discussion on it.
Thank you, Chair Soto. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I'm gonna put the staff report up, um, and that we can kind of just go over it. Like that. I don't think anybody can see that. Here we go. Can everybody see the staff report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Uh, and I would just, uh, ask everybody who's not muted to please mute, too, just so we can hear this pretty clearly. Uh, so if you could do that, if you're not muted, if you could please mute, that would be great. Okay, just to go over the, uh, staff report again, like Chair Soto said, and this is important. Uh, we're gonna ask the commission, uh, today to approve a recommendation to the city council, which as Chair Soto said, will be reviewed tonight. We're asking the commission to do a couple of things, uh, when they make, when whoever makes the motion. The motion should include an overall funding amount. Uh, it should include where the funding within Measure J, uh, that those dollars will come from. And then some instruction to staff on when and how to replenish the funds back to their intended use. So, uh, whenever the discussion concludes and, and somebody's ready to make a motion, uh, please, uh, hit all three of those points if we possibly can. Going to the bidding process. The bids came in and, uh, there were a few bids. Uh, the couple of the early bids came in, uh, they were discarded because they were found non-responsive and they contained significant errors. Uh, that left, uh, bids to be around twenty-six to twenty-seven million dollars for the project. The original budget for the bid or for the construction was about sixteen and a half to seventeen million dollars. That was the original engineer's estimate. Um, so the bids came in about ten million dollars higher than expected, and that's sort of why we're here today. There are also some other costs that were not in the original budget, such as a contingency. As you see in the box below, we've got a contingency of about three point two million. That's about twelve and a half percent of total construction. It's a little bit more. We usually use about ten percent contingency. Uh, this is an older building that has sat around for a while, so we felt it necessary to add a few more dollars to that contingency, uh, just to try to cover any unexpected, um, uh, discovery when the construction gets started. We also included startup costs of about two and a half million dollars. And so the total budget for this project is about thirty-four million. The foundation has raised approximately fourteen. They've actually raised a little bit more than that, but for the purposes of the meeting today and this evening, we're using about fourteen million dollars, which is what the foundation has raised to date. So in order to begin construction, they're asking the city for an additional twenty million dollars. So today, we, we've offered the city council, just so the commission knows, we're not expecting the commission to commit to the full twenty million dollars. We've offered, uh, some other funding sources for the council to consider. But as far as the Measure J funding goes, I've offered up two sources I think that we could use. The reason why I'm offering up these two sources is largely because the money that, uh, we have in these two buckets doesn't, probably will not be used for at least eighteen to twenty-four months. So the money's gonna be sitting there, set aside for future use. And the intention is to use these funds and then to ensure that in a future budget year, which should be fiscal year twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-seven, that we could replenish these funds. If the, if the commission chooses to make the recommendation to council to use the funds, we could replenish them back into fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven budget to make them whole. So we wouldn't just arbitrarily use these funds. We would, we would use these funds with the intention, the money would be replaced in the future budget year so that, that these buckets are whole. So let me go to the buckets. First, uh, in bullet point A there, uh, we have about five point eight five million set aside for new construction of Fire Station Number One. The original intent to construct Fire Station Number One was to do what's called pay-as-you-go. So that means we would set aside whatever amount of money it would take to build a fire station, then construct the fire station, uh, with the cash that we have set aside. That's called pay-as-you-go. Um, that would take several years, uh, to do that. The city, uh, is going down the path of, uh, issuing debt for a fire station or some other financing strategy other than pay-as-you-go. So this five point eight five million may not ever be used. If the, if the city uses to, chooses to issue debt, it could drop down to fund balance in Measure J to be used for something different. However, if it is intended to be used, if we do choose to go pay-as-you-go, we would have to, we would, in a future budget year, replace this money if the commission choose, chose to make the, a recommendation to the council to use these funds for the Plaza Theater restoration. Bucket B. Bucket B is the community-initiated project money. Right now, it has approximately nine and a half million dollars in this bucket to be used. And, and as our commission knows, we have a subcommittee right now that is looking at the application process, looking at when we should open this application process back up to the community. Right now, the intention is to uh, wait until we get a lot of the projects that are currently funded by Measure J completed before we open the application process back up. That could be a year. Uh, it could be longer than that. As a side note, the subcommittee has talked about maybe opening up the application process a little bit earlier, maybe six to eight months from now for grants, sort of like we did to the Mizel Center. That has not been brought forth to the commission yet. It's just an idea. And I say that because, um, maybe we should leave some money in this bucket if that chooses to happen, if we choose to, to open up that application process. But the commission could choose to use a portion of this money to, uh, recommend to the city council to, uh, be used for the Plaza City, uh, Plaza Theater renovation, uh, with the full intention that this bucket would be made whole in the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. And I want to be sure that's clear to the commission, that the commission, uh, uh, you know, could choose to direct staff to, um, make sure that the funds are replenished in the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven budget if the commission chooses to, uh, recommend some of the, some of these dollars to be for the Plaza Theater renovation. Those are the two, um, buckets. Uh, I also want to go over that in the funding agreement that the city council will review tonight, there is a part of the funding agreement that uh, will ask for the foundation to pay some of the funds back to the city. The amount in the funding agreement is blank. It's up, gonna be up for the council, uh, to discuss tonight and to, uh, discuss how much they would like the foundation to, to, to pay back to the city. My point on this is, whatever that amount the council chooses to, um, ask the foundation to pay back, some of those funds will come back into Measure J. So let's just use as an example, ten million dollars. If the founder, if the council asks the foundation to pay back ten million dollars, ten million dollars, some of that money will come back to the foundation. Uh, it'll be, um, if, if, if we choose to use some general fund money, it'll be, some of it will go back into the general fund, but some of it will also come back to Measure J. So not only would we replenish, uh, let's say, the community-initiated project bucket in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would also use the, some of the money that the foundation's gonna pay back to the city to also help to replenish those funds as well. So, um, the replenishment of the buckets, if we use Measure J funding, could come from two sources. It would come from a fiscal year twenty-six, fiscal year twenty-seven budget, and it would also come from whatever amount the, uh, foundation pays back to the city. So I know that's a little confusing. It's a lot of information. And I'll be more than happy to take questions at that, uh, when we get to that point. And I think we're at that point. So, uh, we're asking, again, the council or the commission to, uh, discuss, uh, an amount, uh, if they choose to recommend an amount to the city council and, uh, where that amount should come from. Would it come from the Fire Station bucket? Would it come from the community-initiated project bucket? And then also to, um, if the commission would, uh, want to direct staff to, uh, make sure the funds are replenished, to make these funds, to make these, uh, buckets whole in a future budget year. So that's, that's what I have. Um, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Kevin Corcoran. He, uh, as a member of the foundation, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen here.
Sorry, Chris, before we go to Kevin, can I just confirm one thing? Replenishment from fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, that is a separate reimbursement or like return of the monies than the foundation paid back? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, so the, as, as an example, let's just say the commission wanted to use five million dollars of the bucket. So in fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven, we would probably say, okay, to replenish that money, we would use two and a half million dollars in each year to make sure we pay back that bucket five million dollars. But in addition to that, the commission should also understand, we will also commit the regular three million dollars a year that we have been doing for the past few years to the bucket. So the bucket will indeed be made whole in that budget year if the commission chooses to use those dollars.
All right, I'm sure we'll have lots of questions. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to, to Kevin. Let me stop sharing my screen. And, uh, I'll let him speak, uh, on behalf of the foundation's request, and then Naomi will turn it back over to you, Chair Soto.
Great. Good morning, Chairman Soto, and good morning, everyone. I'm Kevin Corcoran, Vice Chair of the, uh, foundation. I'm also on the Airport Commission and also on the Boys and Girls Club. Thanks to the opportunity to have this discussion this morning before this big vote tonight. You all know why we got here. I mean, the surprise when the bids came through, our architects had projected seventeen point two million using their outside resources. We were fundraising to that number, and we were shocked and disappointed, and unfortunately, we got the twenty-seven million dollar bids. It caused us to scramble quickly to see, how could we do this? How could we make this happen? And in talking to other contractors who work with the city, some of the feedback we got was, if we delay this, or if we put these back out to bid again, that the cost of construction is only gonna go up. There are some new business or building regulations that go in January first, which would also increase the cost of this. So we were put in this untenable situation of, if this is gonna happen, it really needs to happen now. And we've been working with Chris and the staff, trying to look for opportunities to fund this thing, so we wouldn't lose the momentum, and we'd get the Plaza Theater built while we continue to fundraise and try to address this. And what's being presented today through the staff report and just reviewed by Chris is the solution that we came up with, to look for buckets of funding that are not being deployed at this time, not only for Measure J, but Chris, uh, also mentioned, or should have mentioned that there's a huge reserve fund that the city is not using, which also the city council can tap to try to fill in this gap. We looked at twenty million dollars, and if you look at the staff report, it's broken down, not only in construction costs, but also some other requirements in terms of, um, contingencies, some other, uh, requirements in terms of uh, different construction pieces that are part of this. And then two and a half million dollars that are be required to actually open the theater. So that's how we got to the twenty, and you see the breakdown that's there. So as we had these discussions and found that there were these sources of funds available that were not being deployed, it gave us more confidence to say, look, let's use this money now to get this project started. And unlike the firehouse or the library and other, many other projects that are brought to the Measure J Commission, this project is ready to go. We have architects, our plans have been approved by the city. We do have a contractor that will be awarded the bid tonight. We have contractor who's ready to go. And we can start this project on January first. And so unlike other, other projects, this isn't going to stop any of the other city projects. It's money that's available now that can get us going and get us started. And so that's the key difference, I differentiate, I think, relative to other projects. We're ready to go. There's money that's there that can be deployed to get this thing built. But the implication of the timing is also important to discuss. Um, we are committed to continue to fundraise. We fundraised about sixteen million dollars totally. We're gonna continue that effort. Uh, we're in the process now of applying for tax credits, and we're pretty confident that this project will qualify between four and five million dollars in tax credits, which would be returned to the city immediately. And then we have need to talk about just the impact of when this theater opens. The analysis we've done in terms of economic impact is that the annual impact to downtown and to our businesses, our stores, our restaurants, our hotels, will be about forty million dollars a year. That's the economic impact of having this theater open, three to four nights a, a week, with seven hundred guests coming in every single night. The other piece is, unlike any other project, except maybe the convention center, this is a project that's gonna continue to deliver somewhere between four and, uh, two and four million dollars of tax revenue, including Measure J funds over time. We're confident we can pay this back to the city over the next several years through our fundraising efforts and tax credits and also Measure J funds that are being generated through all the activity in the theater. But long-term, this theater is gonna continue to impact everything in terms of downtown businesses. So the economic impact, the fact that we have a timing situation, and the fact that these funds are available to be deployed right now with a, with a shovel-ready project that can be built somewhere between fourteen and eighteen months, and then start generating tax revenue along with our fundraising efforts, is the reason that we're coming to you and also coming to city council to say, this is a project that's ready to go. We're blessed that we have funds available in the city now to do something like this. And unlike any of these other projects, we're gonna pay it back and gonna continue to, to generate Measure J funds over time. So that's kind of the rationale we brought in all of our discussions with city staff and also city council members. And, uh, we hope that we're gonna get your support in this because eighteen months from now, when this thing opens up, we're all gonna have something that we'll, you know, be proud of, but also I think a, a project that really reflects the values of what Measure J was all meant to do, to revitalize downtown, to bring infrastructure to state-of-the-art, which this theater will be. And, uh, we're ready to go. And, uh, we hope we get your support. So let me stop there and just see if you have any other questions or comments where we can clarify, um, the process we've done through staff, which got us to where we are today. Any comments or questions?
Hi, Kevin. It's Cliff Hopkins. I do have one question and a brief comment. Um, the comment is, in terms of the business case, um, the, the expected ROI that you just went through, and I agree with that. The other, the point to think about is, the city is not investing city dollars to fund this whole project. You, you've, you've raised a significant amount. I think you said sixteen million. So in a way, it makes the ROI on the city's investment that much stronger, um, because of the fact that it's not funding a hundred percent of the project. That's a comment. My question is, I thought I heard you say you were fundraising to the seventeen point two million dollar target, and you said you were shocked and disappointed that it came in a lot hotter than you expected it to. I thought I heard you say it came in at twenty-seven million, and if that's correct, that would be a ten million dollar delta, not a twenty million dollar delta. So I just want to make sure I understand, is it ten million or twenty million? And what, if you could explain that, that would be helpful.
Great, thanks, guys. Thanks, Cliff. Um, if you look at the breakdown in the, in the report, to the staff report, um, the delta for the construction costs were ten million dollars. There was one bid that came in at seventeen, but it got thrown out because it didn't meet the requirements. But the other three bids were all within five hundred thousand dollars of twenty-six, twenty-seven million. And so there was ten million dollars in construction cost, but then there were these other costs that were required, you know, contingency costs. As, as Chris said, we're, we're putting fifteen percent of the cost aside, because we're not really sure what's gonna happen. You want to open up a building that's, you know, this old, construction contingencies, other construction requirements, and then two and a half million dollars to open the theater. And so when we added up all those additional costs, Cliff, it came to twenty million dollars. Now, there were debates around, well, you know, should we cut the quality? Should we do more value engineering? Should we delay the opening date, um, and raise some more money for these opening costs? In the sense was, if we're gonna do this, we should ask for the money all upfront. Be prepared, hire the staff, do the programming, it's just gonna take about a year to, to build the full program before the theater opens, to do all this stuff. Why, we continue to raise money, do the tax credits, and, uh, hopefully offset the twenty million dollars that's been offered. So it was those other, it was those other pieces which are low, which are mentioned in the staff report that brought it up to twenty million. The other piece, the other piece, Cliff, you made a point, and this is, this is a city building. Right? The city of Palm Springs opens this building, owns this building. And this is the only project where private funds have come forward to, with, with enthusiasm and momentum to try to make this thing come true. So it is unique in that respect, that this is a public-private project, but it's a city building. It doesn't belong to the foundation. And at the same time, as I said earlier, it's, along with the convention center, it's the only other project that's gonna generate revenue over time, which gives us great confidence that, you know, not only will we pay this back, but this is gonna become a real source, not only for the theater, what the theater generates, but all these other businesses to really replenish and, and, uh, build the Measure J funds over time.
So, um, thanks, Kevin. A great question, Cliff. Um, thank you for being here to kind of chat with us a little bit about this. I do think, I just kind of want to acknowledge a few things before we open it up to questions for the full commission. This is a very unusual situation for a project to come to us that, at this scale, this quickly, at this level, um, that has potential impacts or would be changing the allocation from already would be changing already confirmed allocations. So I just kind of want to acknowledge that to anybody who might be watching. This is not something that is common or, I would say is best practice. But this is a great opportunity, um, and I think it's an exciting time to think about, like, how can we rethink our, um, entertainment options and experience downtown? That being said, we are an oversight body, and it is our responsibility to make sure that we are agreeing to funds that have been fully vetted, that the community has opportunities to provide comment, and not what we're suggesting to council, um, feels appropriate and has been, um, reviewed thoroughly by, by this body. That is the point of the Measure J Commission, is an oversight body, both of what we're recommending and how projects are moving forward. So that being said, I, you know, I definitely have some questions around the economic case. But I do want to open up to my fellow commissioners, um, as well, before, um, I kind of go through my questions. And then the other thing I'll say is, uh, we do have a fire chief, Alvarado, here, because there is the recommendation, um, from staff to move the five point eight five, um, already allocated, already saved money for Fire Station One. And in particular, you know, it would be replenished in a couple of years, but it would not be growing in that time either, right? So I want to make sure that public safety is fully comfortable with that investment or reinvestment and reallocation of monies. So that being said, thank you, Fire Chief, for being here. I'm going to pass it over to some of my other commissioners for a bit, and then hopefully I had time to go, to go last, Kevin. Vice Chair, Robin.
Thank you. I'll try and keep this brief. Kevin, thank you very much for the overview and the enthusiasm that permeates your urgency. And Chris, thanks for the overview as well and writing in advance and through this. So this is this is maybe a combination of comment and question primarily to Chris. I might be oversimplifying things, but I think what's in front of us for this morning is a procedural step to decide whether and to what extent we can temporarily divert funds from our intended or conceptual purposes to, to then agree to a motion, agree to a staff recommendation that city council tap funding for the benefit of the Plaza project. And through that, Measure J effectively remains a third party, will will presumably put a number and a timeline that's conditioned on that money being replenished because we can't necessarily act on it yet. But Measure J's, we're not involved in the operating agreement, we're not involved in the mechanics of whether and how the foundation would reimburse the city or reimburse directly to Measure J. So with that, I think this is, this becomes kind of a simple step today, which is about the mechanics of money. Not, what I don't think is happening today is the foundation and the Plaza project team asking Measure J to contribute more funds than the one time we did, and that one time that we did, it was a million dollar grant intended to be the last dollars funded for the project. Now with that, and I'll get to the end of my couple of paragraphs, with that, that doesn't mean that the window can't open up for the foundation to request more funding because of budget issues. That's happened before. But what's, that's not, that doesn't appear to be on the agenda today. And I know that as a body, we have resisted one-off requests for funding that don't allow a wider process for the community to offer up requests for competing projects. So with that, summarizing it, I think it's a procedural step for us on the timing of the sources and uses of funds and not an endorsement of fresh Measure J funding into this project that has its own, its own valid benefits.
Thank you. Commissioner Wolfert.
Thank you, Chair Soto. I had a couple of questions for Chris. First, I'm a little confused about the Fire Station, number one. When is that decision going to be finalized about whether it's pay-as-you-go or whether the project's being bonded?
So it's been our intention, we've had, you know, back during the budget process for the city, when we presented our budget to the city council, we brought in our financial advisor Suzanne Harrell, and we discussed financing strategies with the council for both the library and the Fire Station. So it is our intention at this point to pursue other financing strategies than pay-as-you-go. So that would include the potential issuing of debt to construct a new Fire Station, number one. The timeline for that is, is, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months away for that to happen. Right now, as Fire Chief is well aware, they're undergoing a study to find a site location for Fire Station, number one, that should come out in late spring next year. And then from there, it just progresses into design work and construction. So we're a little ways away. But it's city staff's full intention. Right now, we're full steam ahead on a new Fire Station. We're not delaying. The diversion of this money will not delay that project whatsoever. We are full steam ahead, and it's our intention at this point to try to find other financing strategies other than pay-as-you-go.
I have a quick question, but wouldn't around, just follow up around pay-as-you-go versus other financing? I would assume whatever we have allocated already would change how much would need to be financed. So if we had ten million for the Fire Station, you could bond ninety instead of a hundred if that's what it's going to cost, right? Or are you saying no matter what, if it's bonded, that the full allocation for the Fire Station would not be used?
Correct. Our intention at this point is to fund the full amount of cost for the Fire Station and not to use any current cash.
Yes.
Oh, it's okay. So just a second question, and forgive me, just because I'm a new commissioner, could you kind of just go over again what the community-initiated project grants would look like that, you know, you mentioned the subcommittee is considering that was done with Mizel?
Sure. And members of the Subcommittee B, you know, go ahead and jump in if you want to. So one of the things that the Subcommittee, and I think the commission has a desire to do, like we did with the Mizel Center, is to fund projects across the city that where we would just issue grants and that our city staff would not oversee that project. As an example, the Boys and Girls Club Drainage Project was overseen by the city staff. And the Mizel renovation of their kitchen was not overseen by the city staff. So it was a desire to do more grant work so that we wouldn't use city resources to oversee those projects. And we could still benefit the community by offering grant funds rather than projects that are overseen by our city staff.
Thank you. And then if I may, very briefly, one question for Kevin. Thank you again for being here. The economic impact report, was that something that the foundation created internally? Or was that done by a third party? Or if you could just give a little more detail on those figures?
Sure, sure. Mark Hamilton, who is our head of finance, he worked with a variety of different people and generating the economic impact. What we did was we took the numbers from the Follies, and we averaged those numbers in terms of attendees. We cut it in half to try to estimate what number, what would be the volume of people who would attend activities. And right now, our hope is, we anticipate about a hundred and thirty nights of performances in the, in the theater. So we used the original data was, came from the history of the Follies and the attendance records and some of the finances that were used when the Follies was up and running and that show was running for twenty-three years. And then we reached out to Oakview Group, and as mentioned in the staff report, we're in final negotiations with the Oakview Group to manage this theater. And so we had access to the first nine months of their experience at the Akershire Arena. As you know, they've been wildly successful, but they've learned some very interesting things. Half the people who go to the arena are driving to the arena within two hours and which influenced some of our forecasts in terms of implications, not only with restaurants and with stores, but also the number of hotel nights, potential hotel nights that could be generated based on some of the data that came from Akershire. And the combination of those data sources, and I think it's, I think it's a very conservative one. We took the Follies numbers, we cut them in half, and then we annualized it since the Follies wasn't open twelve months, this theater will be open twelve months. And the estimates that came out of it was a forty million dollar annual impact in terms of dollars spent, not only in the theater, but also restaurants, stores, and hotel room nights. And then we anticipate the actual tax revenue, Measure J and other taxes that'll be generated just from the theater would be two to four million dollars. And so our analysis that we presented not only to staff, but also to the city council, we think has been a very conservative estimate about the impact that the theater can have. And that's given us confidence that long term, we think if tax revenue alone, we'd pay back the twenty million dollars over five years. And again, the Oakview people who are going to help us run this are going to run it and are going to program it. We're looking at their estimates in terms of ticket costs and also numbers that they're learning about in terms of the Akershire Arena that they think will influence or can be applied to what our forecasts are for the Plaza Theater.
Thank you. One really quick follow-up. Was any of the former Follies leadership involved in this, or did they provide any input?
The leadership has all retired and moved away. So we had access to their data and numbers based on all the reporting they had done to the city over a period of time when they were partnering with the city to produce the Follies. They had an arrangement with the city, so we had a lot of the data provided through the city from the Follies. None of the management is around now. However, we've had a lot of interest from alumni of the Follies to come back and to do something that would celebrate the history of the Follies. But in terms of impacting, you know, influencing either the design of the theater or the potential uses of the theater, we've had some anecdotal suggestions, but not any formal support from the former Follies management people.
Thank you. Commissioner Sipkins. See, your hand is up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
But I have a couple of questions. First, I wanted to applaud Kevin's enthusiasm and optimism and Chris's report. I thought that they were very well done. But I am reluctant to vote in favor of any substantial contribution to the funding of the Plaza Theater by Measure J at this time for a variety of reasons. One, I think that the fact that the, the estimate has come in at about a hundred and ten percent above what the architects and engineers estimate was, is frightful. And I think that all too often in this city, major projects have been underfunded in terms of the initial estimate and overestimated in terms of the completion date, and the city council winds up always contributing more money than was initially projected. And I don't want to continue that practice if at all possible. And notwithstanding Chris's report, I, you know, it's been several years since community-initiated projects have been funded for a variety of reasons by Measure J. I went back and spent a lot of time looking at the history of Measure J and the Measure J ordinance. And I understand that one of the reasons why the citizens of the city were so supportive of the ordinance initially was the fact that they would be able to help contribute ideas to what Measure J funding would be used for. And then finally, I'm not certain that Measure J funding ought to be given to entities or organizations which are in competition in a sense with existing businesses, whether profit businesses or nonprofit businesses. And I'm concerned that, that ultimately, if this theater is built, it's going to take attendance away from, for example, the Palm Springs Cultural Center. I think the projections are extremely optimistic. I don't know, I have season tickets to the Firebirds, and I can tell you, sitting and looking across at the attendance at the Firebird Games this year, admitting that they don't have a particularly good team, I would say that the attendance is significantly down this year from what it was last year. And I think that after a year or two opening, estimating that there's going to be seven hundred people buying tickets to an event at the Plaza Theater on a hundred and thirty nights of the year is overly optimistic, and it simply is not going to happen. And finally, I'm concerned that unlike the Fire Station and the library, which serve all the citizens of Palm Springs, black, brown, and white, this is going to be an entity that principally serves white people who can afford to buy tickets. And I don't think that Measure J funds should be used in that sense, that ought to be at something which is of value to all of the citizens of the the community, regardless of where in the city they live. So I'm not particularly in favor of this. I am interested in listening to the rest of the speakers, we're going to talk about it. But it's simply is not an issue that I am strongly in favor of at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Sipkins.
Would you like me to respond to that, Naomi? Would that be helpful?
Um, yeah, maybe just like real briefly, because we do, we're supposed to finish within the hour.
Okay, I'll go fast. Peter, we were surprised about the cost overruns as anyone was. And yet, when you look at the other major projects the city has funded, like the Navigation Center, this, you know, the fact of supply chain and COVID and everything else, all these projects are coming in more than we thought. Again, our architects projected seventeen-two, but then once we got these bids, we were told, well, this is consistent with other major projects in the city. Best example is Navigation Center. It's just more expensive, and I think that's just the reality of today. In terms of competing with the Cultural Center and other things, you know, you talk to the hospitality industry. What they tell us is that the city has, you know, new restaurants and new hotels and everything else, but we don't have enough entertainment to keep people here. And so our sense is that by bringing more entertainment downtown, it will help the Cultural Center and other entertainment options because people have reasons to stay here longer and take advantage of many more things. We see ourselves in partnership with the Cultural Center, not in competition with them at all. Also, your comment about black, brown versus white people. We are very, very sensitive that this theater has to serve the overall community. And we look at the range of programming that's anticipated. There's a bunch of city meetings and things like civic events. Twenty-one nights are being held aside just for the city to use. But we intend to do programming for kids and for families that'll be available to everybody in this community. And by working with Oakview Group, we have the opportunity to take advantage of their sponsorship muscle in working with companies that can underwrite the cost of these performances, whether they're, you know, lecturers or singers or dancers or family things. Our hope is by, you know, using their clout and their connection to potential sponsors, we can underwrite this programming. Our intent is to have this theater addressed and be valuable to the whole community, not to any particular segment of the community, and we're going to be sensitive to ticket prices to make sure that the whole community can take advantage of this. And I may be missing one, oh, and you know, the intent of Measure J. I've been here for twenty years. I worked really hard for Measure J. And I remember, and those of you who were around then, I mean, we were looking at the blight in downtown and like, would we ever be able to get this, this city back to normal? I mean, Measure J delivered this promise of finally being able to do something with our downtown. And in the course of all of that, the Plaza Theater was always mentioned is an example of, a perfect example of an infrastructure project owned by the city that could really benefit by Measure J funds. We think it's a perfect example, as bold as it is, and let's all agree, this is a bold ask. This is a perfect example of what those funds were generated to do. And we think that the economic impact will more than pay for itself, but it'll just make us feel better about having a venue like that's first class that's available not only to our tourists and guests, but also to our communities as well.
If we could, we might be going long, and we have many, many more questions. So if we can keep the responses brief and the questions brief as well, it'd be really appreciated. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. This is, Chris, this is probably a question more for you. If Measure J does not approve some or all of this diversion of funds, where will the money come from?
That would be up to the council this evening. I've given them some recommendations such as general fund reserves. There are some set of sides that are unused that they could tap. The council could also choose to override the commission. The council has the ultimate decision to do that. If nothing is recommended from the commission, the council can choose to override. Of course, they do not like to do that. They would prefer to take the Measure J commission's recommendation, but that is an option.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Newby.
So a couple of comments and questions. I'm not surprised at the increased construction costs. I just completed a project where I worked that was, you know, came in twice of what we expected, and so the scope, and the scope was nowhere near what the Plaza Theater is. And my conversations with city managers in other cities here in the valley is that, you know, they said, that's just the way it is, especially right now, that we're seeing tremendous Especially right now, that we're seeing tremendous increases in what was originally anticipated. For construction costs. Another comment is. From what was discussed about the fire station, it sounds like those funds are going to be sitting there. Allocated but unused for 18 months to two years. So I don't know why the commission would. Want those funds to just sit there and not be used. The other question I have, and this is for Chris regarding the program funds. The community initiative funds. If the commission decided to, and you may have mentioned this earlier, if the commission decided to keep two or three million. Out of your recommendation for grants. It sounds like there are other sources of funding available from the city to offset that. That's all.
There are options that the council does have for sure. And, you know, I just gave an example that we could use a portion of this community initiated project funds and still leave. You know, plenty of funds there for, to use if we choose to use the grant option. But if we choose to not do that and go the application route. Again, you know, as you mentioned with the fire station funds. The, the application process for Measure J probably won't open for another eight to 12 months. And then it takes another six to eight months after that to vet all the projects and to recommend projects to the commission. So with, even with the CIP funds, community initiative project funds, we're looking at some of those funds sitting there for 18 to 24 months as well.
Commissioner Cabreros.
I just want to also indicate that, like, my biggest concern is also community access. I am disappointed to hear there's only 21 nights set aside for community events. And I think you mentioned 131 for Oakview. So I'm concerned about taking money away from our community projects. Which I feel like is at the heart of the Measure J intent to fund more of a corporate type of event. But I also understand that we can't leave the Plaza Theater abandoned. And I do understand that it will bring money to downtown. But I would like for the commission to look at providing more nights for community access. And also weekend access. I don't want it to just be like, oh, you guys get a Tuesday. And children's events for all of our children in the community and our people who live here in Palm Springs.
Can I just clarify? I may have misspoken. The 21 nights are reserved for the city of Palm Springs to use. Like the state of the city meeting, those types of meetings. I didn't mean to suggest that it's only 21 nights for the community. Those are specifically for those, for those types of meetings that the city would have. So we wanted to make sure that that was covered in the calendar first. So the city has first times to put in all of those types of things. And the balance of the programming would include all of the children's programming, the family programming, along with other things. And they don't necessarily belong to Oakview Group per se. We've had, we've been approached by the local gay choruses, dance, dance people like Nicholson Rossi and others. You know, there are other groups, local groups have come forward and said, hey, we'd love to use the theater. We're exploring all of those and will explore all of those options. So I just wanted to clarify, I may have misspoke. There's going to be a lot of attention paid to the balance of programming would include community stuff above and beyond what the city is asking for. Sorry about that.
Thanks for the clarification on that.
I do have some questions around some of this, just like process for us to understand. Like the. How vetted and thorough these economic numbers are and understanding your partnership with the city and developing it and working through it. I mean, all the parties involved, you and Chris and team probably already aware of that. But for Measure J, again, being kind of an oversight body, it's helpful to have that context. And so the economic impact numbers, you said, was like an internal assessment. And I'm just like a little confused because like at 130 nights at full capacity, that's only about like 91,000 guests. And the claim is that there's like 135 guests for the theater. That's, you know, even. Full capacity for all 700 or all 130 nights would be quite ambitious. And even at 75% capacity, that's only about 68,000. So I'm just kind of trying to understand, like, you know. How like, you know, how closely the city understands these impact numbers and work with you and like making these estimates? And the other thing was, these economic impact numbers are really like impressive and are exciting to think about the investment. But I'm assuming it's like a buildup time. So is that within year one, within year three, it would take five years to reach this level of impact? Like trying to understand like what it would take to this full vision to come to fruition.
Let me take that question first. The startup costs include a million dollars for Oakview Group. To fully staff the theater and also to begin programming 12 months before the theater actually opens. So it's the intent that the startup funds are really, are going to ensure that when the theater opens, we're fully programmed for 12 months. And I suspect for the first two years, it's going to be a little hit and miss. You know, which programming will work, which family programming is more appropriate or not, or whatever. We're going to learn some lessons in terms of overall programming, I think in the first and second year. But our intent is to open up with a full 130 days plus, all programmed and ready to go in year one. Which, which is what those startup funds are for. You know, we've talked to the hospitality folks. Obviously, we talked to Oakview. We've looked at the, at the numbers that the Follies generated when they were in full, full production. Everyone has said that we've been more conservative than not in terms of our estimates. We think some shows will sell better than others, but at this point, we can't guarantee specifically how the community will react to different programming. But we know that we'll be programming from day one. So we'll have a full 12-month calendar. That'll exist when we open the theater in 2025. And I think we're going to have to learn lessons along the way of what works and what doesn't work for the theater this size. The power of working with Oakview, and one of the reasons why we are excited to work with them. Is that they represent, they manage 68 theaters across the world. So they have a lot of data, a lot of experience about the types of programming that, that really works in a theater of our size, 700 seats. So we're really relying on a lot of their expertise in giving us the confidence around these numbers. But, you know, we're going to learn, and I think the community will learn along the way. But what we do know is that we're going to have a fully loaded program on day one for at least a year. And we're going to have a theater that's completely state of the art with the best lights, sound, projection systems. That would attract any type of performance, whether it's films or lectures or musical things or other family things. So we're anticipating all of those genres will be represented in the first year.
And then I have a question for Chris. Like, is there normally like a. A level of. I kind of see this almost like a grant or a loan to the foundation. Is there a normal like auditing system that would happen prior to a grant? Being administered to an outside entity? Like, is this something that would? Is this process pretty typical for us? Or is this, if you can kind of just help us understand like what?
Yeah, so typically.
Diligence that the city would do.
Sure, sure. Good, very good question. So typical when we give a grant to a community, and I use the Mizel Center as an example. There is an MOU, a funding agreement that goes along with that grant, that gives us oversight of those funds. In this particular case, there is a funding agreement that, that we wouldn't do from the Measure J commission to the foundation. But there's a funding agreement that we would do from the city that the council is going to approve tonight to the foundation. And within that funding agreement, our city attorney is going to look at putting some language in there that does include some oversight of those funds. We have worked very closely with the foundation. Excuse me, and, you know, verbally have told each other that we're going to be very transparent. But we're going to look at putting some of that language in the funding agreement to, to give some oversight. To, to the city staff for those funds.
And so then thinking of the rollout, then how does that impact potentially the reimbursement? Like, is the plan, no matter what fiscal year 26, the amount that has, like, if the commission says we would like these funds to be replenished? Is the assumption then from the city that that would all happen in fiscal year 26? Or is it some type of rolling process? Like, when would community members? Feel like the commission has access to those tax dollars again, to be able to invest in other places?
Again, good question. But we want to keep some of the community initiated project funds intact right now. We don't think that the nine and a half million dollars, you know, would be needed over the next two years. But we feel that we want to, we would need a portion of those funds. So we do, there is going to be money there to be used for community initiative projects if the commission decides to use it. So to answer the question about replenishment, it would come in two forms. It would come within the fiscal year 26, 27 budget. So let's say the commission chose to use $5 million of the community initiated project money. We would set aside $2.5 million in '26, $2.5 million in '27. Now, in addition to that, the commission should also know that in those budget years, we would also do the normal 3 million per year. That we always do as a commission in the Measure J budget for community initiated projects. So we're keeping the community initiated project fund whole by paying it back two and a half million in each year. And then additionally, setting aside the normal 3 million.
So we'd continue with our standard 3 million?
Correct.
So that's not more money, that's the money we would be doing anyway.
Correct. Yep. None of, none of that money would be impacted by this. We would be keeping the fund whole.
So it'd be the 9 million that council last June said, like, we need to make sure community initiated projects.
Yep, yep. Very good point. The council is very interested in those bucket of funds as well. And, and we are going to continue with that. And that's the staff's intention for sure in our budget years, to be sure that those funds stay intact. If the, when the foundation, if this is approved and the payback portion is approved. The foundation will pay back some of, some of the portion that we give them. And so let's say, maybe in year fiscal year 26, we would intend to set aside two and a half million of the 5 million. But when the foundation pays that back, let's say they pay back a million of it. Well, then a million would be paid back in the, in our budget, we would only have to set aside a million and a half. To go to the, back into the bucket, because the foundation is paying back some of that money that, to replenish those funds. In addition to what we would use out of the budget. I hope that made sense. It's kind, it's kind of complicated, but.
Yeah. I just want to be mindful of time. I'm, we're kind of thought we'd be running late, so I appreciate everyone staying longer. If you cannot, if you could just message Melissa, so that way we can make sure we have a forum when we get to the vote. If you have to hop up early. Commissioner Futter, thank you so much for waiting. You're on mute, Commissioner Futter. Commissioner Futter, you're on mute. I'm sure it's brilliant, what you're saying. I still can't hear. Could you guys hear? We're going to come back to you.
There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Knowledge this morning has just gone right over my head. Chris, you said. That the foundation would borrow from general fund or the city reserve fund?
Uh, yeah, I, those are a couple of options for the council to consider tonight. The city has recommended that the council doesn't use any more than $10 million of reserve from the general fund. Because we want to keep reserves intact to ensure that projects go on. Because everybody here knows of the cost overruns that are happening. So we want to ensure that we keep our reserves intact. So we have asked the council to not use any more than $10 million. Of course, they can do it. They, you know, they can choose to use more. But we've asked, that's been an ask of the city. So I will say that Measure J funds are important to this. If the commission chooses to commit a certain amount of funds, I think that would be important to the council's decision this evening.
Okay, I have a question, Ms. Soto, Chair Soto, and then I'll make a comment or two. Do we need to vote on recommendation at the conclusion of this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I will be very brief here. The thing makes me nervous and it's like a rock and a hard spot. But I, I, I feel it's a city-owned building, it's a historical building. And it is in the middle of downtown. And to walk away from it, what do we accomplish by doing that? The foundation and people working on this have put their heart and soul into it. Welcome to Measure J. Every project we look at goes over budget. And that's part of why we have the backup of the projects you're looking at, coming up with more money. That's just the nature of the animal here that we deal with. I am very supportive of a fire station. I am very supportive of the library project. And to be reassured by Mr. Mooney and his brilliance with finance. I'm going very, very wholeheartedly to support this. It's a scary thing in a way. And yet I think we have to have faith. And it is a historic building to me. I used to go to the movies there with my husband, if you can imagine that. And sit in the balcony and put our feet on that little bar that goes, it's a pipe there, I believe. So I think I understand all the comments that are being said today. And I think all of us are looking at this very seriously. People are asking me, what are you thinking about? I think Chris has made it very clear. It's like a pot that's sitting there until we can do something. And the theater can do something now. So I'm putting my whole trust in the foundation. That they really get that shovel in the ground and that we see results from this. And I have great faith that our monies will come back to us. So it's been a very interesting conversation. Thank you, Chris, for what you do. And thank you, Mr. Cochran, for your explanation of the plaza. It's a very, you sit upstairs and look at the little twinkly lights. It's a really, an old experience and a wonderful one. And we need to do something with it. So that's my comments for today.
Thank you.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Robin, thanks for waiting.
Yes, thank you. Quick question for Chris. The, the community funding, the CIP funding, you circle those nine and a half million dollars available. Can you clarify, if you have the, the data handy in your head or in front of you? Given how every month we have a meeting. And we ask ourselves, when will we need to give the library more money immediately? And those, those funding emergencies that we know are happening, then we know they will happen for the same reasons we talked about. In relation to the plaza and all the other projects in the conversation today. Have you circled any meaningful contingency for the library? That would not eat into the 9.5 community that you circled?
So the library project is moving pretty quickly. It's moving ahead of the fire station. I think the intention is to bring something to council with a plan early next year to talk about the library and its timeline. Like the fire station, we will probably issue debt for the library. That's our intention right now is to fund the rest of the remaining amount of dollars of that project. With some sort of other financing strategy and not pay as you go. What's different about the fire, the library than the fire station is the library received the grant, $7 million. The Measure J fund has matched that, $7 million, plus an additional million for other uses. So there's $15 million set aside that we do intend to use for the library first. Before we get to the debt proceeds that we would use. We don't feel we need a contingency, at least in the sense that Measure J has to set aside some cash. Because we will have a contingency in the overall construction, but that's intended to be financed through debt proceeds or other financing strategies. So we don't, we will use the funds that are currently set aside because we do have a grant. And we intend to use the full 15 million before any other debt proceeds if we choose to finance, which is our intention at this point.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for waiting. What's your next question?
Did you call me?
Yeah, your hand is still up. Did you have another question?
Sure, Chris. You were very clear that the replenishment would happen 50/50, 50% replenishment in '26. Followed by 50% in '27. In terms of the, the answering Chair Soto's question, my question related to that is what is your confidence level? That the replenishment will happen 50/50 in those years?
I've modeled this out and I'm, I'm pretty confident, and this is. Uh, I've modeled this out and I'm, I'm pretty confident, and this is why. Uh, we have a, 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 a lot of projects in play right now that the measure J commission, we review every month, as you all know. Uh, a lot of the, a lot of those projects are, um, projected to be completed in the next couple of years. Um, right now, we don't have any projects that are added to that. So, um, we look at our typical money that we set aside in twenty six and twenty seven, which would be uh, six million dollars in streets that could increase, uh, three million dollars for community initiative projects, uh, three point, uh, two million dollars in debt, uh, um, debt financing for the, uh, for the downtown redevelopment. And so those three will remain. What's left is a pot of money to be used for additional capital projects, which is somewhere in the vicinity of eight to twelve million dollars when you, when you project sales tax forecasted out through twenty seven. So I'm confident that we can use that portion of money that's not currently set aside for any future capital projects to be able to replenish the community initiated project funds. And then we would still have money left over for other capital projects.
Mm hmm. Thank you.
Commissioner Wolfher, did you have some follow up questions?
Yes, um, thank you. I just, um, I just wanted to have some comments and kind of a question. Um, first, I love the Plaza Theater. Um, I worked as a set dresser for the Follies a long time ago. It really does hold a special place in my heart. I think it's, it's, it's an exceptional um, building and it's a gem. So, you know, Kevin, I want to say thank you to all of this amazing work that you have done, um, you and the entire foundation, and I would love to see this move forward. Um, I do, um, you know, full disclosure, I was formerly full time and now part time at the Palm Springs Cultural Center. Um, I think that this does raise some kind of interesting questions about, you know, competitiveness for resources. However, on the whole, I do believe that, you know, like a, a rising tide lifts all boats. Um, my concern here and kind of where my questions are, the, 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 the thing that I'm a little stuck on is again, I have some concerns about the economic impact numbers. Um, I agree with everything Chair Soto said, and again, you know, with my experience at the cultural center, I feel I, I don't feel those estimates are conservative. I feel that they are, um, really high. Um, I think that a hundred and ninety sellout shows in a seven hundred seat theater a year is, um, not just frankly, not very realistic. Um, I also wish that there was more input gathered from Follies leadership and, and, you know, Mary Jardine, Greg Purdy, they are local. Um, because that was such a unique beast, right? Um, it's, you know, I, I think that the Follies was, was so, so, so different, um, than, you know, having a collection of different kinds of performances and concerts. And also, you know, the Follies really relied heavily on the tour bus industry, which, um, solved a lot of the parking issues as well. And I believe that that industry really isn't what it was during the Follies heyday. So I have some concerns about these numbers. Um, and basically what that just boils down to is I would like to have a better understanding of how that impacts the replenishment and the payback of these funds. Um, if that's going to be more based in actual fundraising that the foundation is committed to doing, or if that's going to be based in like estimated tax revenue. And if it's based in estimated tax revenue, um, is it possible to move forward yet still, um, get some kind of independent assessment so that, you know, again, I, you know, I love the plaza, I'd love to see this move forward, but just as an oversight commission, we're making sure that those numbers are as accurate as possible.
Yeah, I think that the, um, a couple of thoughts. Uh, I didn't say a hundred and ninety days. I think Lauren, our first, our first go is a hundred and thirty days of programming. So it's based on that. Um, we've also looked for other, other sources of data, and that's what we've come up with so far. And, uh, as far as the plaza or the Follies management, you know, I know that we've had in the, in the, I think, the twelve public Tuesday forums when we had over three thousand people come to the theater and hear our presentation, our plans. I know that many of the people in the audience were former, uh, Follies people. They stuck around. We did special tours with them and got their input. Um, again, the theater was built as a movie theater. And so there's some restrictions in terms of what we can do. We can never put Wicked, for example, in this theater. It's just not built for stuff like that, but it's built for the rest of it, and the Follies people have been supportive of where we're going. Of course, some of them would love to bring the show back and whatever, and we've said, you know, you know, bring us ideas if you think that there's something that we can do to, not revive the Follies. I don't think that's unreal, that's realistic, but you know, there's other ways they can participate, but, um, so anecdotally, they've given us feedback, but, um, we've not had formal feedback, but for access to all the data um, and the numbers they did while they were in that theater. So, um, and it, and so I'm saying, you know, the economic forecast is, is really based on the data we could get our hands on. And, uh, but we've really relied a lot on the Oakview group in terms of the experience they have. For example, we know now based on their performance, and I think there's other hospitalities groups that, um, that have also confirmed this, that if you have quality entertainment, the people will go, will come to that entertainment within two hours. So the drive group or whatever they call it, the drive time of the drive group, um, what they're finding in the Aquashore is fifty percent of the people are coming within two hours. And if we have quality programming in this theater, they're very confident, Oakview, that we're going to have not only attracting locals and local tourists, but also attracting people within a two hour radius if we have quality programming. Um, this is something that's different than what existed when the Follies took place. But between PS Resorts and also what we've learned from Aquashore, um, there's a sense that if we do this well and we have quality programming, we're going to attract people from this two hour radius, and then they'll stay um, on, on, on the Aquashore about, um, a third of the people who come stay overnight. And imagine that in downtown Palm Springs, they would take advantage of the cultural center, and they'd take advantage of other things above and beyond, just coming to a performance in the theater. So at this point, those, you know, we're relying on anecdotal information and data, both from the Follies and from Oakview, and also from our hospitality group. Um, and as I said, we'll find out. Um, we've tried to be conservative, um, in our estimates. Um, you know, time will tell. But what we do know is that the enthusiasm in this community for this, we've ever, twelve hundred people who have donated to the theater, big and small donations. The enthusiasm that is generated suggests that, um, if we have quality programming, we're going to fill that theater. And I realize it's a big responsibility with us and also the Oakview group who are going to manage it with us. Um, but, um, you know, we're pretty confident that it's going to be able to generate certainly the tax revenue. And, uh, we're going to continue to fundraise full steam ahead to try to continue to raise money. We have fourteen million dollars in naming opportunities that still exist. Uh, we have targeted list of major donor prospects that we're going after. We're doing a series of fundraising events uh, to keep the momentum going. Uh, we think once the city council blesses this deal, um, it's really going to help us with the momentum to keep, because people will believe it's actually going to happen. And, uh, so we have confidence in that. Um, we'll learn some lessons along the way, and of course, we owe that feedback not only to the Measure J Commission, but also to the city. And, uh, we'll continue to partner with, with all of you, uh, as we learn lessons for this.
Thank you. Kevin, real quick follow up. Chris, can you explain a little more about the payback?
Right, yeah, I was just going to address that, Commissioner Wolfher, thank you. So the payback, uh, that we have in the funding agreement that the council uh, may or may not approve tonight, uh, does not include any of the, uh, economic impact, uh, taxes. It includes, uh, things like uh, tax credits, uh, or additional fundraising. So whatever, uh, the amount the council will approve tonight, that will come back in those two ways.
Um, and I, Chris, I'm sorry to kind of beat this. I just want to make sure I'm understanding how to describe the replenishment process to people. Um, I also got a lot of questions as to how and where and how does this impact other projects? And so if we said, you know, we have six million in public safety dollars, that almost six million already, and in the next couple of years would likely add to it as we figured out what the process was going to be, um, we would I guess, I, I just, I, I understand we're replacing that money, but with that money that we were placing it with would have been used for something else, right? And so there, it, it's not like there isn't a loss. It's just saying we can return it and then we just lose the po- pocket of money in the future. Is that right?
That, that's a fair statement. Yep, that's a fair statement. So if, if we, uh, didn't replace the community initiated project money, that could go to other capital projects as the commission would approve.
Uh, Vice Chair Robin, I see your hands up.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I might have just misheard just this moment ago of the comments between Chair Soto and Chris. The replenishment mechanism would be if, if there is, if there's a million dollars that leaves, that leaves our balance sheet tonight, that million dollars comes back in the future under, under the proposed agreement, comes back from the city council, back to measure J. And everything else remains the same. Forward funding for measure J revenue continues so that this concept of diverting funds for city council to direct to the plaza, that diversion, it's just a timing. There's net, net, there's no negative impact other than the time value of money, correct?
That's correct. Uh, the, so the replenishment would come from future budget dollars out of the measure J fund. Uh, or the replenishment will come back from the payback funds that the foundation does to the city. So it'll be.
Oh, so, sorry. Sorry, let me top you there to clarify. So if there's a million dollars through a motion today and if the Plaza Foundation does not replenish anything back to the city, is the result of that that measure J has just made a one million dollar canceled loan? Because when, when I first read the, uh, the draft agreement, my read, my understanding is we're simply lending money to city council and city council will find a way to replenish that independent of the annual measure J tax revenue. So money is, the, the annual revenue flows no matter what. And meanwhile, there's a side IOU owed back to measure J.
Yeah, I, I think.
I read, sorry, so I, I heard, I, I read it completely opposite, Brian, or Vice Chair Robin. I read it as we are track to earn those revenues again, and we'll be able to put that, fill that pot back up. So clarification, Chris, on, I'm like, which one of us is reading it wrong would be really helpful, because it's not clear, um.
I think you said it best, Chair Soto. So if we choose to, let's just use the five million dollar example. If we were to save five million dollars out of community initiated projects today in the fiscal year twenty six, measure J budget, we would replenish half of that money at two point five million dollars. In the fiscal year twenty seven, measure J budget, we would replenish another two and a half million. So Chair.
What, what is it? What's the source of funds?
The source of funds is the measure J sales tax revenue.
So we're. Which we would get anyways.
Which you would get anyways.
So we're. All right, so this is.
Yeah, sorry.
This is a, this is a request for fresh funding.
E- essentially, yes.
Yeah, very different.
So we're committing future. We're saying the, what our commitments now will be accessible with future measure J revenue.
That's correct. Yeah, future uncommitted measure J revenue. Uh, and I think you said it best, Chair Soto, that the two and a half million dollars in each of those years could be used if we didn't approve anything today, could be used for other capital projects.
But we would have got, we would have, measure J would have been the beneficiary of those identical dollars no matter what. If we do nothing today, those funds are still coming as modeled.
That's correct. That is correct. And, and don't forget, there's our, you know, I, I don't think it's our intention to take two and a half million dollars out of each year because we do expect the foundation to pay back some of that money. So it, 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 while we're saying two and a half million, we're saying that conservatively, we feel that the foundation's going to uphold their agreement and pay back some of that money.
So what this seems similar to is when the downtown park, we were committing, I can't even remember exactly the number. I don't know, Vice Chair Robin, if you remember, we said like a million for the next like four years or something, right? Um, and so we were committing future um, revenue to a project right now, and we're kind of doing the reverse. We're giving money to a confirmed project and saying we'll be able to return that money with future revenue. Right?
That is correct.
Vice Chair Robin.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm I'm, I'm lowering my hand. I'm processing this myself, uh, with measure J as a, as a creditor.
Um, is everyone clear on just kind of that? And maybe it was just Vice Chair Robin and I, but I just want to make sure everyone understands that. We are then, we're, we're saying that the projects that are, have been confirmed priorities would be the funding would be accessible in future years, and then those future years would have reduced revenue for new projects. Commissioner Wolfher.
Um, just another question. Um, if there, and hopefully, knock, knock on wood, if, if there happened to be any construction delays with the theater, would that impact any other existing or future projects?
No, uh, this project's independent of our library project and our fire station project. I bring those projects up because they're the ones that we have highlighted the most. Uh, we are full steam ahead on both of those projects. Library being earlier than fire station, but we don't intend at this point in time that anything to do with the Plaza Theater would impact either of those projects.
Well, I mean, if we needed those additional dollars for the reduced, I mean, we're reducing our revenue of future years, and so we are saying we'll have less access to any contingencies of other projects. We'll have less resources for future contingencies of other projects.
That's correct.
Um, so at this point, um, if there's no other questions or comments, this has been a really thorough conversation. Thank you, Kevin. Um, thank you, Chris, for bearing with us. Um, we don't have a lot of special meetings, and this is, um, really different for us. And so I think there's just a lot of, um, interest and, and, and it really just speaks to the commitment and passion of my colleagues on this commission, and I just really respect that and appreciate that so much. Um, so going back to what Chris said at the start of our meeting, he said that if someone were to make a motion, if, if the commission does want to include this, there's three parts that we, um, that we want to include. An overall funding amount, um, where will the funding within measure J come from? So where are we, which project are we you know, taking it from? And, um, instructions to staff on when and how to replenish the funds back to their intended use. Um, and just as a reminder, um, the two um, funding sources for measure J that has been recommended for the fifteen point three five is from fire station one that we have currently saved up for, which is five, five point eight five for public safety. Um, and nine point five for community initiative, community driven projects. So, um, I will open up to, uh, my colleagues to see if there's any, if it, one, if there's any questions, we can absolutely. You know, I want to make sure everyone feels comfortable, but, um, if there is a motion on the floor and, and if you can include those three parts. I'm going to put it in the chat because it's hard for me to remember a lot of things that people say.
Just if, if I may, a quick, um, follow up a question again to Chris, just to clarify, because this was earlier and there's been a lot of information. Um, if measure J chooses not to, um, fund this, the council would, um, look to either the general fund, like, like, or reserves or a combination thereof, or what would that look like?
Yeah, it would, uh, if the commission chooses not to use any measure J funds, uh, it would greatly impact, uh, uh, the decision that the council would have tonight. Uh, we're only recommending ten million dollars from the general fund reserves because we want to keep those reserves intact for any necessary use of these future bigger projects that we have. We want to make sure they keep going. Uh, they, there, there are some, uh, set asides, uh, but the total of, uh, what we've recommended from the reserves and the set asides do not equal the twenty million dollar, uh, ask from the foundation.
Um, okay, appreciate that. Um,
Thank you.
I just make one final comment and then, um, see if there's a motion. So, um, I a- again, Kevin, I think this is like a really important project. I think that's going to, um, be an opportunity to transform who and how people are spending time, um, downtown. I know I don't take my two toddlers to find dining downtown very often. Um, and so I think there's something to be said about having intergenerational experience downtown. Um, and, and that's really exciting. Um, but I do think that. Um, but I do think that, I mean, this commission has balked at like four hundred thousand dollars shade. It has like choked on, oh my gosh, our park lighting is going to cost four million dollars. This is wow, but do, do we, is this still a priority and had really robust conversations at the, at that level? So for me. You know, at the fifteen million dollar for projects that, um, the things that already have priority and. And I do think that there's an impact on not having as much access to future revenue for contingencies on things like public safety. You know, fire station one is so important for the safety of downtown. Um, and so I, you know, I think that there is an impact to that. And so, um. I think what I would say is I'm open to maybe some, but probably nowhere near the fifteen million, maybe five or six million or something. Um, and you know, I'd be curious to my commission, my, my colleagues about, you know, which of those two, but, um. Kind of the speed of this, the due diligence of it and making sure that we are protecting the resources for really expensive public safety projects in the future. And, um, it's, it's something that is, is really hard for me to kind of balance those two priorities. And so I want to make sure that, you know, the, the foundation has the support of the city. But as, as Commissioner Futter said, like every project has so much heart, so much commitment, so much work to try to push them forward. And. Every project, public and private has delays. I'm, I, I don't, I can't think of a project. A substantial infrastructure project in Palm Springs for the last twenty years that hasn't. And so, um, kind of just coming with it with that context of assuming it'll be expensive, assuming there will be delays. Um, how can we make sure that we're investing in a way that like balances with some of the other priorities? So that being said, um, is there a final comment and or a motion from? I guess maybe we can take these one at a time, just to kind of sense where we're at. So one is the overall funding amount. Is there an amount? Is there a consensus of people want to do the full fifteen point three five? Be a couple nods now. Oh, Commissioner Marshall, I'm sorry. Yes. You're still on mute. Commissioner Marshall, you're on mute if you're speaking.
I think we've heard a lot of information, but from my point of view. We know a lot of these projects are not shovel ready. This is. I mean, the fire station, we don't even know where it's going to be located. So to me, that's an easy one that we can. Borrow the, the allocated funds that will get paid back first. Um, and as far as the, the nine and a half million, again, it, we're still going through staff. It could be a year or two before we have that. And if they're going to be putting money back into us. In the twenty six, twenty seven timeframe, I think we're better off using the funds now. Um, so I support staff's recommendation of the full fifteen point three five.
Okay. So we have Commissioner Marshall saying to recommend go with the full fifteen point three five. Any, um, counter or how, how do people, what's kind of where we at on that number? Commissioner Wolf.
Um, I, I could be comfortable, I couldn't agree with what you said, Chair Soto. I could be comfortable with diverting, um, the allocated funds for the fire department. Um, you know, given the, the, as Commissioner Marshall just said, given the status of that. Project, however, I am very uncomfortable dipping into community initiated project. Uh, the, the community initiated projects bucket when, um, we have the ability to issue grants. Um, and you know, move away from that, the, the backed up city timeline. Um, and again, it just, it's a question of fairness and priority, um, for the entire community. So that's just where my comfort level would be. And I think that that gives council ample opportunity to, um, you know, make up the difference.
So it sounds like we have one for fifteen point three five, another possibly for five point eight five. Uh, Commissioner Newby.
Yes, thank you. Um. This sounds like I'm compromising in the middle, but this is, these are my thoughts. The five point eight five million. For the fire station and then retaining, uh, funds. About three point five million for grants. So. The number I'm coming up in my head is ten million. Um, because also we have to bear in mind that even if. We do use community funds for grants, there's going to be a lag time in that. The, there's a subcommittee working on that, uh, and then there's a lag time in terms of receiving. Uh, applications, reviewing them and making decisions, uh, regarding them. So I think that retains the integrity of the commission wanting to support community, uh, projects. Through the grant process. So those are my thoughts. Ten million, um, from the commission. For the Plaza Theater. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm just going to ask if we can go really quickly. Um, we have a lot of, I, I know, I'm not trying to cut you off. I just want to make sure we have three parts to this motion to decide. Uh, Vice Chair Robin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I might not be following the guidance you just gave Chair Soto, but. Then what, what troubles me on this, uh, the, the breadth of this conversation is that. Since the downtown park, this now becomes the largest, the largest scale. Aside from the fire department, which was always nebulous, but this becomes the largest project for the city. That within the last two hours, measure J has been asked to be a major partner in it. We have capacity of funds, no question. However, what's, what's missing for me is the, is the North Star message. From the city council. That this is the most important thing. For measure J in the coming years. And that we should get behind this project because it is the most important thing. The most important thing used to be downtown park, then it was the library, then it was the fire station. And other than within the confines of our meeting. I haven't really seen how the Plaza Theater is the most important thing to the city of Palm Springs. All right, I'm not, I, I, I think the project is a great project. We have money that, that it troubles me that this is the, this is suddenly. The most important thing for us to decide on and has urgency for many good reasons. Uh, so with that. That preamble, uh, I think the dollar amount is secondary, uh, whether it's a five or a ten or something higher. Uh, I, I think it's a, for me, it's a broader man, question of mandate for funds.
So you're saying if it's more of a question, if do we fund it? So not how much it's.
Right. Do we fund the, the, the dollar, the dollars are there and Chris, maybe you can help with some. Uh, background information that's happened dialogue amongst ci- ci- city management and city council of. Why this is now the number one priority for us when it, when it wasn't the last time we met.
Um, I would say that I don't believe it is the number one priority for the city. I believe that the library and the fire station are priority. Uh, those projects, uh, as I've stated before, will not be impacted by this. Um, I believe the view of the city and I don't want to speak for anybody on the council, but I, I, I do believe this is an important project. Uh, but, uh, the library and the fire station remain, uh, the number one and, and number two projects of the city. Um, at this point.
Commissioner Skippins, Sipkins, do you have it? An if and how much amount, um, that you. Or you want to share for this potential?
Thank you, Commissioner Soto. Again, I apologize to the entire commission and to the guests. Uh, now I just got noticed that Spectrum won't, uh, be restoring our internet until at least two o'clock today. So you were on my phone and I apologize. Uh, I support, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Soto said. I think the five or six million dollar figure is one that I could support today. I think anything higher than that, um, I will, I would not support. Uh, I do think that. Uh, the, I don't like the fact this is coming to us at the very last minute. We've had a very thorough discussion. I came into the meeting thinking that I was not going to support anything, but I do think I can support five or six million dollars. I would not support anything more than that. Thank you.
Commissioner Newby, I, I just want to make sure we're kind of closing in on the if and how much, um. Okay, nevermind. Okay, your hands down. Um, so why don't we? I also want to be mindful that there's some people who are working, um, and so I really want to try to get to. If we're going to have a motion or if we're going to have a recommendation at all. Um. And so the first part of, um, the, the motion is an overall funding amount. So I'm hearing zero, six, uh, ten and fifteen. So. I'd love to hear from maybe some of the people we haven't heard from yet. It's, or I don't know if we want to vote each one, but, um, I'd love to kind of lock it down, which of those numbers we feel comfortable. Um, Commissioner Davis or Commissioner Cabreros, do you have any thoughts? Um, Commissioner Davis, thank you.
I do. Yeah, I guess I, I'm probably leaning more in that middle, the, the ten million. I think given the city has general fund reserves, uh, other councils set asides. That, you know, but get them to about ten million with the fire station likely being fully financed. We won't need those funds. Certainly we could use them for something else, but this seems like a project that's certainly well within the intent of measure J. And then I, I'd be comfortable if the agreement is that the tax credits, if those do come to fruition, come back first to measure J. So that puts us back at that, about that ten million.
Thank you. Commissioner Cabreros.
Um, and I, I agree. I was thinking about six million as well. And I like the provision that if tax credits came back to the city, they would go back to the measure J so that we could fund future, um. Community projects. So, um, I know we're not talking about it, but like the, probably the five point eight five from the fire station. And then, um, the rest from the community projects to round up to the six million.
So, uh, Vice Chair Robin.
I know this is not a bidding war. I would, I would propose seven and a half million, uh, so that we. Given off it for, with the, with the approach that this gives sufficient cushion. This gives capacity in conjunction with general fund reserves. Uh, and that absolutely the suggestion of. Andrea Davis, the, the, the suggestion that the repayment provisions be expanded to identify naming, uh, tax credits as well as the other. Potential revenue sources. It's a great idea. Uh, but my, my, my thinking for the seven, seven and a half is not so much of splitting babies, uh, but to provide ample. Cushion so that we don't have us, we don't have the, the dreaded tag along conversation of it wasn't enough.
Um, Commissioner Wolf, I just, before we talk about which pot of money, I just want to confirm. The amount, um, so it sounds like there's. Seem to be a decent amount of people saying six, now possibly seven and a half. Um, so before we talk about which of those two, Commissioner Wolf, or do you have a comment around the amount?
Um, kind of a question, um, about, about the amount. So I know that, that, the, the overall, um, number that the foundation is looking for includes startup costs. Um, I just wanted a reminder of what the actual deadline is for the contractor payment. And then if there is also a window for any, um, philanthropic support to come in to make that difference.
The.
Chris.
For, for some of, like the contingency, perhaps the startup costs, that kind of thing. I'm trying to figure that, that's sort of what I made me now.
The, the bids, if I get your question right, Commissioner Wolf, where the bids have to be, we have to commit to the contractor by January tenth. So if the foundation, I'm sorry, if the council, uh, confirms funding tonight. And then they, uh, go ahead and confirm the award of the contract. Uh, then, uh, construction would probably begin early next year. Um, you know, we're talking probably early, early next year. Uh, I don't, uh, and, uh. Uh, and then so the dollars would be committed right away.
Um. Okay, so let's. Close in on this amount, six versus seven and a half. How do people feel? Commissioner Davis.
I, I agree with Vice Chair Robbins, the seven and a half, and I think the council still has other funds from which to divert. And, you know, it's, I will also say this is also going to be a, um. High profile project. Did I think it should also generate positive publicity for measure J and our supportive. Projects that, you know, positively impact the community.
Yeah. Commissioner Futter.
I would agree with seven and a half. I think that's appropriate and a bit of a cushion. We can revisit it as we see this project move along.
All right. It sounds like we're pretty comfortable with seven and a half. I'm not seeing any, um, hands raised or, or. Uh, emotional glares at least. Um, so let's think then about of those two projects for the seven and a half. Um, how much do we want to divert from fire station one? So kind of our public safety commitment. And then. The second pot of money is, um, the community initiated project. So things to keep in mind is if we deplete the complete, like the allocation of fire station one, like we're. Definitely going to have to dip into community initiated projects to get to the remainder of the seven point five. If we, you know, community initiated projects could fulfill the full, uh, seven point five, uh, desire of the commission. Um, which we would have, um, two million dollars for, um, that kind of, uh, grant. Uh, kind of grant funding for community initiated projects that Chris mentioned, um, staff feels like they would be able to do. But if the commission feels like they don't want to just leave it at two million dollars and want to leave more, you know, there's a conversation to be had around splitting it across the two. So, um. Me personally, I, um, I think I would probably prefer spinning, splitting it across the two, um. Public safe, we hear so much around, um, public safety and making sure that we are, um. Supporting kind of the really necessary investments. And so even if it does get depleted, even if it does get replenished, this five point eight five for. Um, fire station one, it just seems like we should assume we're going to have public safety contingency needs, um, in the future and to not have. To not have access to that seems, um, makes me a little uncomfortable. So I would prefer splitting it across the two. Uh, reactions or, um, disagreements? Commissioner Marshall.
Well, be. Since we already heard that by doing this, it would not impact the fire station. I think, uh, full five point. Eight five should go toward the seven and a half million and the, the balance taking elsewhere. I also want to say I agree with expanding and maybe in our understanding is that in a paybacks. Go directly toward the fire station.
Yeah. We can just pause on the payback so we can just finish this conversation around, um, which of the two. Um, so Commissioner Marshall is saying, uh, for the full five point eight five. From fire station one, and then the remainder from community initiated projects. Kind of have two options, splitting it across the two or the remote, the, the, bringing coming from fire station one. Commissioner Wolf.
Um, just question if there, there were contingency, future contingency needs with the fire station, if it's financed, what would that look like? My inclination is to support using the, the entire bucket if it's financed, but I just would like. I, I, I don't want to do anything that would put us in a potential, you know, if, if, again, we need to safeguard. Public safety, Sophie fit just.
The full intent, we, we intend at this point to fully finance the fire station and not use any available cash. That would include financing would include a contingency.
So in that case, I agree with Commissioner Marshall and support using the entire, um, bucket for the fire department.
Do we want, I'm, I could live with that, um, unless I hear anything different. Okay. Okay. So let's do Commissioner Marshall's suggestion. And then the last was instruction on when and how to replenish the funds back to their intended use. So a few things that I heard was, um. instruction on when and how to replenish the funds back to their intended use, so a few things that I heard was um the tax credits that Commissioner Davis um said, um and um the other suggestion was um to for it to go back to fire station one, which would be my assumption, right, Chris, like wherever we're kind of pulling it from, that's exactly where it's going back.
Yeah, so at this point, since we haven't done any debt issuance yet for the fire station, we'll know more when we get to the fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven budgets, if it's the commission's desire, we could uh certainly instruct the uh staff to replenish both buckets in future budgets, uh unless um other financing strategies are used where we wouldn't need them.
Okay, so it sounds like we have agreed at seven point five. The majority will come from the fire station one with the remainder to come from community initiated projects, so a little under two million. Um, so we'd have a little less than seven point five for community initiated projects still, and then um instruction would be, you know, any um tax credits and and definitely for these funds to be replenished, um back to the intended use.
Chair Soto, I would just add, we we we, to just to make this official, we would like to have somebody make a motion and.
I just want to confirm that this is the three things that we're agreeing. So if there's no other discussion, if someone can make a motion with those three points. Commissioner Futter. You're mute, but I'm assuming you want to motion. Great.
I'm sorry, is there a timeline on the repayment, that would be my only question? Like, when do you expect that should start?
Three years from the opening of the theater would be uh the timeline for repayment by the foundation.
Okay, should that go into our motion?
That's in the funding agreement that the council uh may or may not approve tonight.
Alright, okay. Okay, well I'm on an open mic, so I move that our motion is that money will be seven and a half million. And it will come from the fire station and community projects, and that uh repayment will be through tax credits and directly to the fire station fund, is that what we all agreed on? What was it?
Well, I guess maybe the other fundraising, right, so if they fundraise, um you know, have some fundraising um momentum, that that would also kind of expedite the replenishment timeline, right?
That's correct, the way, so on the, on the repayment, uh that we would choose to split the repayment funds proportionally where they came from. So if seven and a half million dollars came from measure J and twelve and a half from the general fund, then they, the whatever's paid back to the city will go back to uh each fund proportionally.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion for Commissioner Futter, can I get a second? Um Vice Chair Robin, thank you, a second. Uh so we have a motion, a second, all in favor of seven point five to the Plaza Theater. Majority of it coming from fire station one, the remainder coming from community initiated projects with the replenishment timeline uh as allocated uh in the payback plan of the city, including tax credits and fundraising, um all in favor, if you could say aye or raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Nays or abstentions? We got one nay um from Commissioner Sipkins. Um, thank you uh for your, so this motion, oh, I, bless us, sorry, I think we need a roll call vote, sorry.
Thank you.
Want to do this all over again, sorry.
No worries. Alright, Commissioner Cabreros.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fetterer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshall. Commissioner Marshall, I think you're muted.
You can vote, type in your vote if you're having audio issues.
Aye, you had me on mute.
Commissioner Sipkins.
Nay.
Commissioner Dickman.
No.
Commissioner Wolfher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Robin.
Yes, I, yes.
Chair Sotom.
Yes.
So I think you need to say the vote, it it passes and and in what denomina- or what amounts?
We have two nays, two noes. And seven ayes. Seven yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Yeah, that's me.
Well, um, this meeting went much longer, um and I really just want to say thank you to everyone um for accommodating us, uh for staff, for guiding this conversation, Kevin, really appreciate you kind of helping us think through this project um and this opportunity for all of us to um have this uh new experience downtown, um the, just as a reminder for all of you and anyone who might be watching, uh this is coming to uh council tonight. Um, and so if they can owe it, there's nothing that says that they have to agree with us, um but the council does weigh what we say um quite heavily, and and if you would like to get a comments or um have the themes of this conversation to reflect the themes that will be discussed tonight, recommend sending comments uh either written or public um to city council as well. Um, thank you so much, everyone, have a wonderful rest of your day and um have a ha- happy December.
Thank you all, thank you so much, take care now.
Thank you, bye.